Well, good morning. Welcome to our November 7th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. We'll start with introductions in the room. Hello, Commissioner.
Good morning, Xano Giro, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Nancy Cronin, County Council.
Rachel McInney, County Administrator.
In the room.
Nick Walker, Oregon Cascade West Council of Government.
Retired Sergeant Major Vinnie Jox.
Martha Lucas, Regiment Service Officer for Oregon Cascade.
Christopher Jacobs, Corvallis County DIA.
Brian Chulsey, Human Resources for the Cascade West.
Nick Andrews, Project Management for the Cascade.
Robert Orton, Mechanic, Cogmont View, Landville. Member of 701, Local International Union Union Operating Engineers.
Donna Rogers, Sheriff's Office.
Anthony Barco, Oregon State University.
Art Whitney, Retired Captain, Army.
Jeffrey Marshall, Benton County Sheriff.
Justin Carlin, Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff's Office.
And Colonel Steven Bomar, Oregon Military Department.
Major Chris Klein, Oregon Military Department.
Three dollars.
Three dollars.
Christine Klein, spouse of.
Oregon Republican County Public Affairs Officer.
Lieutenant of Benton County Sheriff's Office.
I'm going to make these videos use that.
Trump War Department.
All right, and anyone joining us online?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, hi, Arlene Marums. Thanks.
Anyone else joining us online? Next up, are there any announcements this morning? During that, move on to item number two, review and approve the agenda. Are there any changes this morning?
I think we were removing item number 11.
Removing. Okay. No executive session. All right. Any changes? Consider the agenda approved. Okay. Next up is comments from the public. Robert Orton. Come up. And. Just the button, so the red circle comes up by the neck of the microphone. That means you're on. So up to three minutes this morning.
My one. Commissioner, my name is Robert Orton. I am a mechanic, current at Cogmont View, Landville. Represented by local 701, International Union Operating Engineers. We are currently on strike for unfair labor practices. We intend to address the issues through your company for some time until we decided to vote unions. December of last year. We work in some of the most atrocious conditions you can imagine. Every kind of hazardous waste you can imagine, and mechanics. We're out in it and exposed to it. And see the processing of it in ways that most people don't. Waste management has to happen, and it can happen effectively and safely. But what I see happening out at Landville is not that. The amount of garbage coming in vis a vis the amount of equipment and material to address it. Again, everything is, in my opinion, is not done safely and effectively. Reaching out to agencies responsible for addressing this issue, DEQ, OSHA, EPA. No one seems to have any interest in addressing the concerns out there. OSHA refers us to DEQ. DEQ refers us to the EPA. EPA points it out as a state issue. And the general consensus is the Public Services has a permit to do this. But nobody is enforcing the permitting. Nobody is checking to see to it that they're in compliance with that. And nobody seems deeply concerned about it. Recent article about the methane gas leaks from there is quite concerning, not only to myself and my fellow employees out there, but as a member of the community. You know, and someone concerned about the environment. These things are a concern. And they're a concern to all of us. At this point, you know, it is difficult to say if anything can happen at this. But something needs to. And the appropriate people need to be called to account or not following through on this and not holding them in compliance. One of the things pointed out in the article regarding the methane leak is that when Republic Services self-reports. When people take for face value the information they're giving them, it is often, and is in the case of the methane leak in the EPA, just flat false. And admitting, taking false readings. It is a rough place to be. And I'm proud of what I do, and I'm proud of working out there with my fellow mechanics in an attempt to, you know, do our part for this. But at the same time, until the agencies are held accountable to address this, until the people who have that ability do. And have the stomach to step up against the money and address this, these things will continue. But the trash produced by the area is not going, you know, it has to be processed. Now is the time to hit the brakes, slow down, take a look at what's happening, reach out to the agencies. Make sure they're in compliance before we go forward anymore out there with any sort of expansion or permitting. And thank you for hearing me. If you'll excuse me, I need to get back out to the picket line.
All right, thank you, Robert. And we have someone online that wishes to offer public comment this morning.
Good morning, are you calling on Arlene?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, Arlene Marums. And I'm sorry.
Up to three minutes.
I'm sorry, I'm unable to be there this morning. Today, you'll be talking about the second reading of the amendment to the Traveling Animal Act. And as you know from my email, I did not submit public comment on the first reading of the ordinance because I did not know it was held on October 24th. And as I explained, every indication was that it would be held in early November at a regular Tuesday board meeting. Such as today's meeting or two weeks from now. So as I explained, I'm feeling quite blindsided by the process that has continued to go on for this amendment process. And considering that I was the lead on this ordinance, I hope you will consider my comments. That I sent to you and a few minor recommendations that I made. I also hope that you will give me a few extra minutes now to speak because, you know, just to speak briefly to a recommendation and also. To express my gratitude to the Commission. And I'll just point out that at the October 24th meeting, you allowed Christie Schrock to give 10 minutes of public testimony. So I would appreciate a couple of extra minutes if it's needed. First, I do want to express my gratitude for meeting, you meeting with me earlier this year. And being open to learning about why this ordinance was necessary. I do believe you've come to understand the animal welfare issues and the human safety issues and the oversight issues with traveling animal acts. And I do believe this informed your decision to retain the intent of the ordinance. As I noted in my letter, I do support the amendments that improve clarification and transparency, and I was happy to contribute to that. I do want to speak briefly about the rodeo exemption. It does create major loopholes by allowing travel animal acts at rodeo events. And this may have been inadvertent situation, but it is a loophole that is created by this exemption. So I hope you'll consider my option too that I proposed, which just clarifies that the rodeo exemption applies to livestock and domestic animals only. And I think this would just cleanly close the loophole while retaining the intention of the exemption for rodeos and FFA events. There is one error in my letter where I talked about the exemption for assistance animals. I did mean to say that ADA does not recognize assistance animals, not service animals. I incorrectly wrote that they do not recognize service animals, but that's, that was just a mistake. So they do not recognize assistance animals, and there's no reason to exempt assistance animals, which are basically dogs and cats. So anyway, despite the misunderstandings about the intent of the original ordinance, I do believe that the ordinance continues to reflect. Our shared values in the community for animal welfare. And the intention, which is to not perpetrate, or I should say, well, perpetuate animal suffering by allowing these animal, traveling animal acts. That grossly neglect and harm wild and exotic animals. So I do again, want to thank you all, and I am speaking on behalf of many members of our community as I provided that petition for you in my letter. And, and I'll tune in later to hear the second reading. And again, I'm sorry, I couldn't be there in person today, but I do have a job, a day job. So thank you. Thanks for letting me speak.
There's no other comments from the public. We'll go on to item number 4.1. I mean, November is Military Appreciation Month in Benton County. So I'm pleased to announce we have a special recognition this morning that will include a color guard presentation with the National Anthem. Prior to a proclamation reading for the Military Appreciation Month by Mark Lipinski. Mark is with the Benton County Veteran Service Office, which serves a very important role in our community. Our reading will be followed by comments from a hometown hero and Purple Heart recipient, retired Sergeant Major Vinnie Jox. Who served in the local infantry unit based in Corvallis. It's an honor to have both of you here this morning. I'd also like to recognize members of the Oregon National Guard Public Affairs Office who are here today, including Oregon State Public Affairs Office, Steve Bomar. Good morning. And information expert, Major Chris Klein. It's also an honor to be able to recognize all of our veterans for Military Appreciation Month and Veterans Day this year. I'm pleased to announce that the OSU Air Force Drill Team. Is here today to give us a presentation. So with that, would everyone stand for the presentation of colors and remain standing for the singing of our National Anthem by Mon Nichols from OSU? All right, go ahead and be seated. And thank you, Emma Nichols, for a wonderful job of singing. And to the OSU Air Force Drill Team. Next up, Mark and Vinnie, would you come up to the table with the microphones? And I think Mark Lipinski will give us some comments and read the, our proclamation. And you need to press the button on the base of that, so the red light comes on.
There we go. Morning, thank you, Commissioner Malone and Commissioners for allowing me to be here today. It's an honor. Veterans Day, two words, one day, a time to honor all veterans. Let's look at this day. The temporary cessation of hostilities between the allied nations in Germany in World War I went into effect on the 11th hour, the 11th day of the 11th month. And for that reason, November 11th, 1918, is generally regarded as the end of war, excuse me, the end of the war to end all wars. As we know, that was not the case. But November 11th is a day that we celebrate all of our veterans. What is a veteran? It's defined as a person who served in the military. It's a simple definition. The branches consist of the Army, Marine Corps, Navy, Air Force, Space Force, and Coast Guard. My start to my veteran career was in the United States Army National Guard. And I would like to include the National Guarding components, all reserves. If it's one hitch or 20 years plus, as some have, that person joins an elite group. Veterans come from all walks of life, all experiences. They're an asset to any community. There are thousands of positions in the service that keep those branches running smoothly. Those jobs transition into civilian careers, whether it be government, private industry, or self-run businesses. I tell veterans that I work with as a veteran service officer that each veteran's experience in their service is unique to them. When a person signs up for their choice of branch of service, they're giving up certain enjoyments of life that we may take for granted. Relocation, deployment to hostile environments, training, separation from family and loved ones, or just a few of the challenges. Some are faced with extreme hostile intention and actions. Veterans Day is set aside to recognize all of those that have served. As a veteran of the US Coast Guard, a veteran service officer, I would like to extend my gratitude to all veterans for dedicating their service to our country. I wish to thank families of the veterans also, because their support is crucial. It's my honor to be present here at this meeting today. And I will now read the Benton County Proclamation for Military Appreciation Month. Benton County holds deep reverence for the men and women who have served in the armed forces of the United States, recognizing their unwavering dedication and sacrifice to defend our nation's freedom. The United States Congress has designated November 11th of each year shall be set aside as a public holiday to honor veterans. With respect for and in recognition of the contributions our service members have made. We urge Benton County community members to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans. Benton County acknowledges the importance of recognizing and appreciating the sacrifices made by our military members and their families, not only on Veterans Day. But throughout the entire month of November, which has been designated as Military Appreciation Month. Therefore, let it be proclaimed that Benton County officially designates November 11th as Veterans Day and declares the entirety of November as Military Appreciation Month. A special time reserved for the heartfelt expression of our deepest gratitude and appreciation. In doing so, we wholeheartedly honor our veterans and show our unwavering support for the dedicated men and women serving in the military.
Thank you, and entertain a motion.
I move approval of proclamation number P 2023-019, in the matter of proclaiming November Military Appreciation Month in Benton County. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Well, thank you, Mark, and a reminder of how important our service members and their families are to our community.
Thank you.
Next up, retired Sergeant Major Vinnie Jox. Sergeant Major Jox is a US Army veteran with extensive service, including Operation Desert Shield slash Desert Storm and Operation Iraqi Freedom Number Two. He was severely wounded during that operation and played a pivotal role in establishing the Oregon National Guard Reintegration Program. Which later served as a model for the National Yellow Ribbon Program. His accomplishments spanned leadership roles from team leader to sergeant major and include notable awards such as Legion of Merit, Bronze Star, and Purple Heart. Currently resides in North Albany. And thank you for joining us this morning. And it's an honor to have hometown hero helping us celebrate.
Thank you, Commissioner Malone, and thank you all the Commissioners. Would you mind if I, would I be able to stand up and talk?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You might have to bring the microphone.
I'll use my big boy voice. Oh, here we go. Oh, perfect. Hey, thank you. And. Can everyone hear me? I love to brag about our unit here in Corvallis. So I've got a few things, and that's coming up on 20 years. They've done a number of deployments since ours. I don't know if many of you know, our unit was selected to be First Cavalry Division QRF, Quick Reaction Force, Air Quick Reaction Force. Major General Shirelli, the division commander, selected Bravo Company 2162. They had the highest PT scores in that company in the entire division, highest weapon qual. Most Ranger qualified soldiers in the unit. Let's see, there's a number of other things. We got selected to do that mission. We got fast stroke certified in Fort Hood, and it was insane. A National Guard unit was selected to do that out of an entire division of more than, I'm going to be conservative, 20,000. It was a rough year. As of last week, I think, well, last week, we got two more Purple Hearts approved. 20 years later it took. So we're sitting at about 25 Purple Heart recipients out of Bravo Company alone for that deployment. We had four killed in action. I was with one of those young heroes, and they're the true heroes. I'm not a hero. We had Matt Zedwick, one of the most decorated soldiers during that time, Silver Star recipient, Archon with Valor and Purple Heart. And Second Platoon received the Presidential Unit Citation. I don't know if everyone knows what a big award that is. That is like an individual receiving the Distinguished Service Cross. That is one below the Medal of Honor. They give the Presidential Unit Citation because they couldn't pick and choose who would receive it. So they give it to the entire unit, and they gave that to Second Platoon in the Battle of Fallujah. A National Guard company. Let's go here. Relationships. It was amazing to go with a group of National Guardsmen in those communities because most of them were a little older. We built relationships in those communities that quite frankly kept us alive. And a lot of the time it was kids. Having a relationship, the kids liked us enough to tell us when there was an IED in the road. So building those relationships and trust saved a lot of lives. It would have been much worse. It could have been much worse. I learned about those relationships when I was back home licking my wounds, back in the hospital, trying to get back up and get going. We were approached by some individuals, and we actually were going building to building. And this is how the reintegration program started here, here in Corvallis. Penny York, I'm sure some of you guys know her, Lynn Benton Community College. Patty Mulder, Chamber of Commerce. Larry Mullins, I'm sure most of you know him. He said, "All my facilities will accept TRICARE." And prior to that, we couldn't get people coverage. And he not only helped out with his whole healthcare system, he helped with other hospitals getting troops in to be seen for all kinds of ailments, mental and physical. Let's see, Dan Hendrickson, a lot of you guys know who he is. He was our battalion commander. And then when we were up north, we were with James Rainey, who is now a four-star general. Dan Hendrickson was an amazing man, and he made us successful. By his high morals and his training that he insisted on having. And he, once he trusted you, you didn't ever want to lose that because it was a precious thing. And he's still a friend of mine. Al Shimmerhorn, you guys know who he is, you've heard his name? One of the best. It was amazing what he did. He came to the unit and had coffee with us in the morning while we were D-moving. He built up such a relationship with us. I'd never seen this before. Guys at night would get released, and I'd hear this, hey, who's driving? We don't want to put Al in a bad position. Community policing, learned a lot, learned a lot from those guys. Community policing. Learned a lot, learned a lot from those guys. Wonderful community. And that's how you welcome people back. What they need now, you know, with all of us here, we're going to have an impact. I will, no matter what, I'll always help our veterans. Um, they need a hand up, not a handout. They need the resources. That's the big thing. Uh, right now, there's a, it's, we've got wonderful people out there helping, but we can ask the county veteran service officers, what are their caseload? It's incredible, and they still do their job. It is absolutely insane, their caseloads. So thank you for making sure that we have county veteran service officers. They are the primary thing to get people in. Um, and that's in every single county. Um, the hand up and not hand out. Um, they still have a lot of things to do, and I can go over just out of that small company we had. I believe we have two doctors now. Um, four Oregon State Troopers, a number of other police officers and different agencies. Uh, the list goes on. Um, four sergeants majors, which is unbelievable. Um, that many guys made it there. Um, colonels, uh, it's insane. But it all started here in this community. And I need to thank you guys, this whole community, for making sure that happened. We didn't choose the war we went to, so that's absolutely irrelevant. We rose our, we raised our right hand before anything even happened, and I appreciate it when people can differentiate that. It's about getting people home back in the community, leaving everything else beside. So with that, thank you. Uh, the entire, the entire board and Commissioner Malone. As the, as the chair, I have a gift for you, for your library, and it meets the requirements, so you won't get in trouble receiving a gift. Uh, this was written by a very dear friend of ours. It's about our battalion in Iraq. Uh, by John R. Bruning, he's a local author, and this is our whole journey, uh, that we had over in Iraq. So, thank you.
Well, um, thank you for your service and your, uh, presentation this morning. This is a great way to start off, uh, the Veterans Appreciation Month and Veterans Day coming up this Friday. So we, a great way to start the, uh, remembrance, so, thank you. Now, we will start our work session, uh, project updates from Benton County Economic Development Office, Christopher Jacobs. Now that you're an old pro and coming back to give us the update on what's going on in your office.
Sure thing. Good morning.
How long have you been on the job?
Almost ninety days today. So, uh, we're round in the corner. It's been a busy twelve weeks or so. Um, it's great to be with you again. I want to start by thanking our veterans for their incredible service. That's a tough act to follow. Those guys are really the best among us, and I'd be remiss without acknowledging that. Um, like I mentioned, uh, when I first met with you, there weren't too many updates. It was like week two on the job, but since, we've been pretty busy. Um, I want to start by talking about the twenty-six businesses that benefited from ARPA grant funding, uh, ten thousand dollars each. There were eighty-nine grant applications, about two-thirds of them were in Corvallis. About a third of them were, um, outside of the UGB and other communities like Philomath, Adair Village, Monroe. It's a whole variety of different businesses, and I could tell you they really appreciate the support. The next project I wanted to touch on would be, uh, the South Corvallis Food Hub. Um, thank you to the administrators, uh, for helping us get that sub-recipient agreement signed. Um, I personally met with dozens of different stakeholders, food businesses, people involved in food security, nonprofit agencies and the like about a vision for the food hub and the best and highest use of these, uh, limited financial resources, totaling six hundred thousand dollars. Um, we just put out the RFP for a consultant. That consultant um, is going to help us do a number of things to help us meet this aggressive deadline. Um, again, that deadline is, uh, by the end of the month, uh, beginning of next month, we'll, we'll make a decision on the consultant. Um, they'll have until about early March to determine feasibility and, um, then we'll do a presentation again to the Board of Commissioners and Corvallis City Council about the proposed way to move forward. Um, if everyone likes the proposal, we'll start to sign contracts so we can make sure those funds are obligated ahead of the deadline in July twenty twenty-four and spent down by the end of twenty twenty-four to meet our, uh, deadline obligations. So the consultant, um, what are they there for, right? They've got five primary tasks. They're going to determine the feasibility of a South Corvallis Food Hub. Uh, they're going to identify the best location for a South Corvallis Food Hub. Uh, we hope to negotiate agreements with partners that host commercial kitchens. So thinking about the Benton County Fairgrounds and the commercial kitchen there, and that with Tommy Douglas and others, uh, at the county to talk about how to better utilize those existing resources, we come up with some great ideas. So I appreciate that collaboration early on. Um, we're also going to develop, uh, an inventory of equipment and infrastructure to support local food businesses. So what does that mean, right? If you're a cottage food industry, uh, business, you may not have canning equipment, you may not have bottling equipment, you may not have packaging equipment, uh, things like flash freezing, so um, this food hub consultant would be an expert in the needs of food businesses to be able to make recommendations. So if you're um, having trouble, if there's a barrier to enter that market as a new food business, our hope is that these grant dollars would be used to, uh, provide the support from the commercial kitchen space um, to the equipment and infrastructure necessary to make food products and even the, the market to sell those food products in South Corvallis, whether it's, uh, retail food offerings, pop-up restaurants, or some kind of congregate meal dining site. Um, and then fifth, and perhaps the most important is to identify a potential organization to operate the food hub and make recommendations for financial sustainability. The reason this is so important is we have six hundred thousand dollars to stand up a food hub. There have been no commitments made beyond that to, uh, uh, support the food hub in an ongoing way. And, um, talking with a lot of different food hubs around the state over the last ninety days, um, they all really operate based on, um, public assistance, right? So the local unit of government, grants, foundations, those are used broadly to support food hubs in all of the different iterations. Um, I can't think of one. I haven't encountered one that is completely financially sustainable on its own. So what we're proposing to build, working with food businesses, not only as the users, but the operators, would be a unique and transformative project even among food hubs across the state. Um, if you have any questions, feel free to jump in. Otherwise, I'll just keep going down my, my updates. Um, so that's sort of the timeline and next steps for the food hub project. We're really, really excited about this vision and, uh, bringing somebody on to help execute that project.
Well, Christopher, um, maybe this would be a good time to, uh, define, uh, food hub.
Yeah.
I, I realize there, there's a range, but, uh,
Yeah.
What's the, uh, specific vision for South Corvallis?
Sure. So, um, a food hub takes all kinds of shapes and forms, and it means different things to different people. Um, I can say when I arrived, the EDO had been working with lots of different partners, and there were lots of different opinions about what a food hub was. Some folks in the social service world would like to see a commercial kitchen where there can be congregate meal sites and, uh, improve food access. Others think of it commercially. So thinking about, um, food aggregation, food processing, the distribution of food. Um, broadly speaking, a food hub that we're trying to execute will accomplish two things. It'll improve commercial opportunities for food businesses. It'll improve food access for people in South Corvallis. Those are the goals, and they're centered around maximizing the utility of existing resources and providing additional resources to complement what already exists and to better utilize what already exists. All right. Um, I want to also note in closing on this, uh, topic, there will be a public information meeting towards the middle of November, um, to introduce, uh, this vision to the public who, uh, may not be aware of this opportunity to serve as a consultant, to be a user of the food hub, or to have their food, um, access improved as a result of the project. So we're really going to get some, um, some public input and, and try and amplify these opportunities to participate. The project has, has seen a lot of public engagement, but this is really just the first step, and we want to make sure uh, the folks that need to be involved in that conversation, um, you know, have a seat at the table or invested in, in the future outcomes. Um, I'll kind of skip through the enterprise zone application because we have that on the agenda for later. Um, city council did approve, uh, an enterprise zone application for Natural Point, um, uh, last month. We haven't seen one of these applications in a while, and so I know there's probably going to be some questions about that. Um, one of my biggest takeaways in the first ninety days here has been the incredible demand for, uh, industrial space in Benton County. Businesses really, really want to be here. Um, the work happening at OSU is incredible. You may have heard President Biden recently announced the Microfluids Tech Hub. It was a mass, uh, timber hub. Um, it, it was not an over-exaggeration to say that the research happening here at Oregon State University and the businesses coming out of that are unique, one of a kind, and a treasure that, um, most communities would, would envy. Um, but what we find too often over the last five to ten years is they don't have a place to call home in Benton County. Um, our vacancy rate is very, very low. There are few available commercial properties, uh, that are industrially zoned and appropriate for the businesses that want to call Benton County home, that want to create high-paying jobs, that want to invest in our community. And so, um, I've met personally with, with twenty businesses, um, which is an incredible clip. I've talked to the Business Oregon Partners. Um, they say, "Hey, you're pretty busy normally." There's, uh, usually a pretty strong interest in Benton County, but, um, now so there's really a spike over the last ninety days, and folks looking to, to do site selection, um, talk about public incentives, talk about um, what they need to do to, uh, get through the development review process. And, uh, so we're trying to inventory our, uh, vacant industrial lands, find public part, private partnerships to build new industrial properties, um, so that the, the companies coming out of OSU don't end up in, um, communities far away, right? To that end, one of the things that we're working on is wetland delineation within our airport industrial park. We've got seventy-five thousand dollars, um, that was accepted by Corvallis City Council last night for the purpose of wetland delineation. Um, I'd say there's a lot of potential in our airport industrial park. Uh, we don't fully understand the conditions of many of the tracks. And, um, and for a business, what they expect is, um, a consistent, uh, guide to development, right? They want to know how long something is going to take, what the review process is, um, what are the current conditions? If we don't understand that, we won't be well-positioned to capitalize on those investments. And that's the purpose of the wetland delineation dollars and the focus of the EDO, um, moving forward. Uh, our goal is to get as many certified shovel-ready sites in Benton County as we can, not just at the Airport Industrial Park, but in Monroe, in Adair Village, um, and Alsey, uh, in Philomath, and, and I've met with, um, the administrators, uh, the elected officials in those communities, and, um, and they're excited to work with us. They really are. They need the support. They're excited that the EDO is, uh, starting to engage. Um, we're in the process of trying to bring on another staff member to help with that because it is an incredible amount of work, especially with the high demand. We've got to move quickly or we're going to see more businesses leave. You know, to that end, I think how we gauge the EDO's performance can be improved. Um, to date, one of the major metrics that we use is how many businesses have we spoken to? If you speak to a hundred businesses every year, well, apparently you're doing your job. Um, I think we can do better. I think we could do better, and it can be data-driven, and we can get better metrics. Things like the industrial occupancy rate and the inventory of our vacant industrial lands, um, are jobs of the EDO, and we need to be able to accurately describe the environment, the climate, and the conditions of our industrial properties and our commercial, um, environment moreover. And, uh, and that's something that, you know, as I've, I've jumped into this role, um, there's a lot of foundational work that still needs to be done, to understand what we have, to understand the trends, and to be able to, uh, build that narrative, um, so that we can capitalize on these opportunities.
Uh, any, uh, questions for Christopher?
I just want to thank you for the report, um, on your first ninety days. It sounds like it's been a very busy, um, three months. And I, I think you're spot on in terms of the work that needs to be done, uh, with respect to making sure that we have shovel-ready sites for those new businesses that are emerging from OSU or HP others. Um, and I'm very excited about the South Corvallis Food Hub. I've been involved in the fringes of that effort for probably about fifteen years. So it's something that I'm very well aware of, um, and there certainly is a lot of interest. I'm very glad to hear that you're going to have a public session, uh, so that, um, the RFP, uh, intent can be communicated more broadly. I think there are a lot of people in town that, um, will very much be eager to, uh, play a role in one way or another.
Thank you.
No questions really from me, just wanted to say thank you, and I'm glad that you're here. Uh, we went for, you know, a while with no one sitting in that seat, so happy that you're here, and I like your ideas. I like, um, what you're speaking to about, uh, better metrics, and I completely agree. Um, so thank you, and I, I'm the commissioner liaison for the, let's see, is it changed names? It used to be the Economic Development Advisory Board. Now it's the Economic Development. Anyway, I, when that starts meeting again, let me know.
I sure will, and it's really a pleasure to be here, um, and to do this work with all of you.
Um, I would, uh, third the notion of, uh, great to have you on board and, uh, know that, uh, because the position was vacant for so long, uh, some missed opportunities and, um, and of, uh, uh, a lot of things piled up on, uh, the desk. Um, uh, ma- maybe, uh, I guess one reason for the lengthy, uh, vacancy was reorganizing how, how your office was, is organized. Would you speak to that? Uh, kind of the economic side and, and the environmental, um, side and what the change is?
Happy to do so. Um, in order to do that, I think we have to go back to the twenty-tens. Um, Tom Nelson held, uh, my role for a long time. Uh, Tom had one staff person helping him, um, Tom had one staff person helping him. That person at times was a full-time staff, at times was a .7. When my predecessor Kate took over the role, the EDO grew to about 3.7 full-time staff. The reason for that was reorganizing the EDO to take over some climate responsibilities, advisory boards, the Climate Action Board. And so that department grew in its scope, and it grew in its staff support. Since then, the EDO has been reorganized again, and climate has been removed from the focus of the EDO. Not to say that we're not fully committed to sustainability and best practices with climate, but our EDO will not be directly supporting those boards and commissions or taking the lead on those initiatives and projects. That'll happen out of the city manager's office. And so they will be keeping about half the staff, and half the staff will be supporting the EDO. So a return to the model under Tom Nelson. And so I'll have one full-time staff assisting me with the sole focus of economic development here in Benton County.
And the key word there is you will have.
We interviewed four candidates about a week ago. Because this is such an important position, we want to make sure we get the right candidate, right? And so there's a tough labor environment right now. And so this isn't an entry-level job.
because you have, that's your other half. And the more capable they are, the easier it is to advance projects. And if this gets too detailed, we can take it up later, but I know the airport site is challenging because the county has a role, and we were trying to remove ourselves from that role. What's the status of that effort?
So we're going to be digging more into our strategic operational plan in late November, early December. Usually that process would be underway right now, but sort of, I think we're doing budget first at the city of Corvallis and then talking about SOP stuff. So with all of that SOP stuff, I'll be proposing some changes to make that process easier in terms of zoning. And I've been working closely with the Community Development Department here at Benton County. We just sat in on a pre-development meeting because we want to make sure that we're not putting up unnecessary barriers and that we're competitive. I like to say that economic development is a team sport. It really, really is with all of our partners, Business Oregon.
It's been there for quite a while and has potential, but some things need to change to, like I say, make it competitive with other sites in our area and around the state. So I hope we can make some progress on that.
It is top of mind, I assure you.
Any other questions or comments?
Coalition, Economic Development Coalition.
That's right.
We'll do a couple pieces of business and then have you come back for the
Thanks again.
Next up is the consent. Next up is a consent calendar.
I would like to pull the minutes from the consent calendar. Well, I'd like to pull them because I would need to make change or suggested amendment. And on page 17 of the packet, I'd like to correct the minutes to note that I stated that one of AOC's top priorities for the legislative short session was the community corrections dollars, not one of the legislature's top priorities. A little different in meaning. I already sent this correction to Erica by email, so with that, I'd be happy to approve the minutes.
Got a motion? Sure, second.
All in favor of the motion to amend the October 17, 2023, four minutes. Say aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved. We will have a public hearing, matter of exemption from the competitive bidding process on the new Benton County Emergency Operations Center. So next up is Old Business 8.1, second reading. The Men of Benton County Code, Chapter 9, ordinance number 2023, days 0321. And are you going to handle that, Vance?
Yeah, I can kick this off. So as you know, on October 24, the board had a public meeting, public hearing at which considered amendments to Chapter 9. Those amendments were approved, and the board conducted a first reading of the ordinance, brought back today for the second reading of the ordinance as required by our charter. At this juncture, you're all intimately familiar with the issues. I think you're all very well acquainted with the changes that were made and that were presented by Tommy Douglas, the natural areas parts and the events director, both at the work session and the public hearing. So much more I can pile on. I suppose you all probably have some questions or some comments, so I will pass it back.
I would like to speak to it, if I may. I was pretty frustrated that we did not acknowledge or notify Arlene Marums that we were holding the first reading early and that it was at an information sharing session where we don't usually take up formal business. And so she was not present and able to participate in the public hearing at that time, and I would like to be able to consider the minor corrections that she suggested in her letter to us on page two, and would like to discuss the fact that we do leave a major loophole for exotic animal exhibits and events with the rodeo FFA exemption because a rodeo or FFA event can be held anywhere in the county and include a sideshow, if you will, of exotic animals under the way this is written. The suggestion she made that the exemption applies to activities using livestock, domestic animals only would close that loophole, and I would feel more comfortable about this ordinance if we were to close that loophole. I recognize this is a second reading, and we would require a change in process and a delay if we were to go back and make any changes. So I would like to ask Council Croney what would be required if we wanted to go back and address those issues.
So if the, if the board's decision is to reset its review of the changes to Chapter 9, we would not conduct the second reading. We would simply abandon this particular ordinance's process, and because the second reading has been held, this ordinance would just die. We would then go back to the starting gate, advertise a public hearing, conduct a second public hearing to consider any additional changes that you may wish to direct staff to make, and then we would proceed anew. That's, if I understand Commissioner Ogero's thoughts, and I'm not trying to get into your head, if I understand the direction you're talking about, the, another option would be to enact this ordinance, conduct the second reading today, and direct staff to come back and amend this amended ordinance. Candidly, the outcome, the outcome isn't any different. It's just a question of whether you wish to keep the process moving forward and have these changes in effect sooner, and then that would give both staff and the board and anybody who wishes to comment a little more time to come back because there wouldn't be any real rush. Remember, the primary objective was to take out the Latin in English, so it was much easier for staff and the public and vendors to understand. That is what has been, that has been accomplished. Sounds like there might be some changes you'd like to make as well. So if the direction that Commissioner Ogero is, the direction you'd like to go, we can stop right now, not conduct the second, second reading and start fresh. We can conduct the second reading, and you can direct staff to come back, and we can amend the amendment.
My preference would be to do it all at once rather than to amend the amendment and just not conduct the second reading.
So I tend to, I, you know, this has been a long history, back and forth. There's been tensions, and I think including the exemptions of the rodeo and FFA was, you know, in an effort to let the Fair Board know that they've been heard and help them sleep at night and let them know, you know, just take away the confusion that's there. I don't believe that they are just sitting there waiting for the chance to take advantage of a loophole. FFA, they talk about showing exotic animals and rare breeds, and those include llamas and alpacas and rare poultry breeds. So not tigers, it's not some of these other, you know, animals that we're worried about. So I prefer to leave those exemptions in there, and I, I'm interested to hear Commissioner Malone, or if you were going to respond.
I just wanted to say that I agree with you. I don't think there's any nefarious intent. However, the industry that conducts small-time circuses with animals that they travel with all over the country on a continuous basis and are not necessarily as scrupulous as our local folks. So if there were someone saying that they were going to host a rodeo on a private farmer ranch and hosted one of those small animal-based circuses, that would be, that would fall under our exemption, and if they were calling, if they had a rodeo event as well. So that's, that's where there is a loophole, and I don't know that we're a big enough market for anyone to come and try and take advantage of it. But there it is. We could also just move forward as it is without tightening up that loophole and see if problems emerge and then amend later. But my preference would be to just add that one sentence saying that the exemption applies to activities using livestock and domestic animals only.
I could go with the, sorry, I could go with adding that sentence.
I would like to proceed with what we have and get some certainty in this process without making any changes. I think if we want to make changes, we can open up the old discussion. We have something that I think is better than what we currently have and like to proceed and get, if this ordinance enacted and if there are real problems, not just theoretical problems, to make the amendments at a later time when we have a better idea of what, what the problems actually are.
So we can make an amendment today?
No.
No? Okay.
I think we would be starting over.
Then I am willing to move forward today.
You know, before you go any further, I don't see the actual ordinance in our packet. I see Exhibit A, but I do not see the, am I missing it? I finally remembered to turn it on. Baby steps. So my comment was, I don't see the ordinance in our packet. I see the exhibit, which, which is the amendment to Chapter 9, but the vehicle that carries the Chapter 9 amendments, I don't see in our
It's not in the packet. Does that mean that we cannot move forward with it?
That's correct.
Okay, in that case, I would like to consider at least the recommended minor corrections so that we have a clean ordinance to delete assistance animals, delete the unnecessary additional explanations in Section 4C and 4M that were suggested by Arlene, and to consider the other amendment after discussion with our colleagues at the Fair Board and
Vance, do we need to set a schedule at this time or just do our usual?
I think the question before the three of you is, do you wish staff to pull that, bring the ordinance back to you on the 14th? Or do you wish to essentially table this particular process and start anew?
Our goal is to have this complete by the end of the year, and my sense is that we could do that with either pathway. We would have to hold another public hearing, however.
Correct, that's correct. And just to clarify, I'm, I don't have the count in front of me, but as we, as we all know, November, December gets difficult to schedule things. We cannot have this or, a new ordinance in place if we start fresh in two weeks. Just the process of the hearing, the second read, and the 30 days before it takes effect, it won't be in place. The process can be underway, yes, but we will not have new ordinance in effect if we start over. And I will also add that it would be really helpful to have our NAP Director here to to give you some comments and feedback for what the Fair Board, what Fair Board's input is on, on these particular late, late comments.
And Tommy Douglas was scheduled to be here today but has a family emergency. Our next board meeting is next Monday, the thirteenth.
So I'm just gonna maybe give you a path forward. I don't think there's any harm whatsoever in simply pushing this forward to the fourteenth, or thirteenth, excuse me, thirteenth. Having Tommy here to, to talk with you about this and maybe you all can chat with the Fair Board in between, or she can chat with the Fair Board, give you a better feel for where the Fair Board stands on these topics as well.
I feel like, I'm sorry, I, I feel like I already know where the Fair Board stands. However, as much as I, as much as I would love for this to be wrapped up, I do believe that anything worth doing is worth doing right. And so I would be okay with starting the process over to add the one sentence. As I said, I still, you know, I, I like the exemptions for the rodeo and the FFA with the addition that Commissioner Ojero mentioned.
I too would like to get this wrapped up, but as I said earlier, if we don't accept what, what we currently have in front of us, I think we're starting over and it could be a lengthy process.
I, you know, I don't understand what would take a long time in terms of the minor corrections, the technical fixes, and even adding the one sentence to the FFA and rodeo exemption and moving that into its own paragraph is not exactly a, a major change. I think that we do need to run that past our NAP staff and the Fair Board. And, but I agree with Commissioner Wise that if it's worth doing, it's worth doing it right. I don't really want to go through this all over again. I'd rather do it all at once.
So, is that clear?
So we're not conducting a second reading today regardless because we don't have the ordinance in the packet?
That, that part is clear, yes.
And, and we will not conduct a second reading. We, we will move forward with the technical fixes and consideration with our Fair Board and NAP staff of the one-sentence addition to the exemption for FFA and rodeo.
Who haven't had a chance to see that or deal with?
Correct.
Giving them an opportunity, okay?
I do agree with that. And I didn't, when I said before that I already knew how they felt, I meant just in regards to the ordinance as a whole. So I didn't mean to sound snarky or whatnot, so.
And the next regularly scheduled Fair Board meeting is Monday, November twentieth.
Okay.
And then we do have a regularly scheduled board meeting on November, Tuesday, November twenty-eighth.
Yes.
Yeah, and so I will communicate with Tommy Douglas or desire to make these changes. I will put those changes into a draft, send it to her so she has something concrete to discuss with the Fair Board.
And then, first reading of the revised ordinance would be?
I, so I think you said the Fair Board meets on the twentieth. Board's next meeting is the twenty-eighth. Honestly, I don't think it's reasonable to expect with Thanksgiving in there that this would be on the agenda for the twenty-eighth. I think it's more likely the first, a public hearing would be. I'm having deja vu. Isn't this what we did at the, at the goal setting? I would, I would expect this to be come back in December. I just don't think it's reasonable to expect November.
Well, and, and part of the reason for going over the dates is just, you know, give those involved and interested an idea of our upcoming schedule. So it, it will be December at the early, early December at the earliest.
Correct. We will not bring it back to you in November.
Thank you.
I promise that.
Thank you.
I know.
All right. Number nine, new business, approval of Natural Point Enterprise tax zone abatement request.
We have time for a break or?
This is our last item as far as I can tell, and Christopher's here. We'll have a break and then the public hearing at eleven. You're on.
Hello again. As mentioned, the Corvallis City Council approved the Enterprise Zone application from Natural Point last month. This was additionally reviewed by our Enterprise Zone Advisory Committee. There are some nondiscretionary standards applied by the state with regard to enterprise zones. Those things have to do with application timing, the date in which the work is completed, that is, the expansion and construction of new facility, the business eligibility, so things like wages and employment. Staff determined in the review of the application that they meet all of the, the non-statutory requirements. What the Enterprise Zone Advisory Committee and what City Council were reviewing is our sustainability requirements, which are additional non-state requirements imposed when we created the Enterprise Zone collectively Benton County and City of Corvallis. The sustainability standards are included in the material provided for the agenda item. And we will go through the application to touch on some of those initiatives that qualify Natural Point under our expanded sustainability requirements for the three-year abatement. Because Natural Point did not indicate in Section One under Products and Services an applicable category, they instead chose to select five different elements from Section Two, Three, and Four to qualify for the three-year abatement. Those sustainability initiatives are as follows. They measure energy, and energy used in waste per unit of production. They encourage bike riding to work in dedicated charging stations. They encourage and engage suppliers to redesign their products and services to meet the Enterprise Zone goals. And they design for efficient manufacturing and assembly. Operationally, they routinely conduct process or facility energy audits. Those are taken directly from the Enterprise Zone Sustainability Application. You may be wondering, what is Natural Point? Natural Point is an electronics manufacturer that has about sixty employees. They do optical tracking, so hands-free ergonomic mouse for assistive technology, head tracking for PC gamings and optical motion capture hardware and software. So taking a step back, the Enterprise Zone was created to encourage investment and expansion in our shared borders. Some of the Enterprise Zone is in the City of Corvallis. Some of it's in Benton County outside of the city limits. The purpose of an Enterprise Zone and how they're used is to provide for a tax abatement for a period of time that would encourage a developer or an existing business to make a new investment. So the value of this, the taxable value of this new construction will be calculated by the county assessor. And after three years, they'll have to start paying for the additional taxable value of the new construction. They get a three-year break, and that's sort of the carrot to say, you know, we want, we want to see this new investment in our community. And that's why the Enterprise Zone exists. Any questions?
You mentioned the three-year break. What happens in year four as far as what they pay in new property taxes?
They would begin to pay the full taxable value of the new construction. So say that the Enterprise Zone provided, let's just say, ten thousand dollars' worth of relief every year. Year one, they'd get that ten thousand dollar break. Year two, they'd get that break. Year three, they'd get that break. And then year four, they would start to pay that at ten thousand dollars on the new taxable value.
Okay, oh, thank you. Any other questions for Christopher?
Just reaffirming, this has already been approved by both the Advisory Committee and by the City Council. So we're just the last, the caboose on the train here. I would be happy to make a motion to approve the three-year property tax abatement agreement between Benton County, co-sponsor of the Benton County Corvallis and Enterprise Zone, and Natural Point Inc., Resolution Number ARC 2023-026.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Well, you had good timing, right before our break, so we get this guy going. Well, thank you, and I want to hear how this works and, and it seems like a worthwhile investment by the public and see what happens.
I have a question. We used to get reports about the Enterprise Zone on a fairly regular basis, and I think, which is for my own sake, I believe that all of the property tax abatements ended and therefore there was nothing to report on, and that's why we haven't heard anything for a long time, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
We will take a lengthy break here, and I think be back at eleven for the public hearing requesting an exemption from competitive bidding for the new Benton County Emergency Operations Center. So, so you back here at eleven o'clock for that and if there's any other business we need to take care of. Hello, welcome back to our Tuesday, November seventh, twenty twenty-three board meeting. And we will move right into the public hearing since it's after eleven o'clock. And it's a public hearing in the matter of requesting an exemption from competitive bidding for the new Benton County Emergency Operations Center for the use of Construction Manager General Contractor Services of Contracting, Gary Stockoff.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you. This is the public hearing part of our follow-up from two or three weeks ago. I remind you, last year we went through a similar process to the initial CMGC process, which at that point we were able to select Hoffman as our contractor. But we did set it up that as we came back and, you know, depending on if we had funding for other components of JSEP, that we would then move ahead and do CMGC as well to continue on with that contractor if we felt it was appropriate. In this case, Hoffman has been just awesome to work with. They have really been very helpful as we've navigated so far along on the courthouse. I will say we have actually met already, kicked things off with the EOC, with the Sheriff, UnderSheriff, Brian. So we're moving forward and looking forward to hopefully having a building permit for that one this summer, probably about the same time as we have the courthouse. So this is just a formality of actually renewing or amending Hoffman's contract to allow them to continue on CMGC services for the EOC.
I have one question, and it's not, it doesn't pertain to the CMGC contract per se, but given that we have a joint emergency operations plan with the City of Corvallis, has Corvallis also been at the table in terms of discussing the EOC?
They have not been. I was not aware that they were going to be part of the process, but I can get with the Sheriff and Brian and talk with them on that, yeah.
Well, just acknowledging that we have a joint emergency operations plan and that we do everything jointly with them. I know that they're in transition because their emergency services manager, Dave Busby, is retiring, and I think they're bringing someone new on. But I would think that we should be consulting with our partners.
I will get with the Sheriff and Brian on that.
And for the record, CMGC stands for Construction Manager slash General Contractor. Appreciate abbreviations because they make meetings shorter. The original contract was, as I recall, left open-ended so that we could do something like we're talking about today.
Correct.
Okay, and really glad to hear things are moving forward. And I would assume if the EOC and the courthouse began about the same time that the EOC will win that race as far as completion.
I, I mean, it will be obviously a much smaller and simpler bill in a lot of ways, but that'll really be up to Hoffman, how they stage it and put it all together. What this does is it really gives us a lot, a lot of energy for the EOC and helps us manage the costs on that. That's the beauty of how this has kind of worked out. The EOC will be the benefactor of having Hoffman already there.
All right, any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion. Any members of the public that wish to testify at this point? I don't think we have, Erica, we don't have anybody signed up. Okay? Last call, any members of the public that wish to comment at this time? Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion.
I move to approve the findings of fact for requesting an exemption from competitive bidding for the new Benton County Emergency Operations Center for the use of the Construction Manager General Contractor, CMGC Services of Contracting, Order D 2023-075.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Looking forward to having you back here, Gary, with progress reports. All right. I will now close the public hearing and resume the regular business meeting. The only thing left is other, do we have any other business at this time?
I'll, I'll make an announcement other, under other, which is that Saturday, Veterans Day, Forest Spirits Distillery has their annual fundraiser and tasting event where they do a pie eating contest. And in the past, we've had city managers, we've had law enforcement, as we might remember, our own sheriff came in second place a couple of years ago. This year, our commissioners from five different counties, and I am, I've been asked to represent Benton County. So if you come to the event, I will be there and I intend to win. So there you go.
Congratulations and thank you for doing it on our behalf.
And the location?
It's at their South Town. It's at their South Town location. It's the pie eating contest will be around 5:00, I believe, and it starts earlier in the day, maybe like 1:00. Don't quote me on that. And it does, I would recommend signing up ahead of time if you plan on going because the past few years they have filled up before the actual event.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements? If not, I will close our business meeting.